18th Louisville City Council meeting. I'm Mayor Ashley Stolzmann. Because of COVID-19, this meeting is being held electronically and is being recorded. If you'd like to request permission to speak during the public comment periods, an attendee can raise their hand by clicking on the Raise Hand button at the bottom of the screen. Attendees calling in on their phone can dial *9 and we'll see a hand raised on your behalf. When I acknowledge a member of the public and the clerk unmuted, you'll need to state your name, address, and your question or concern. Each person will have three minutes for their comments. If you'd like to speak on another topic, you'll need to raise your hand again. Thank you so much for following these directions to helping us maintain meeting decorum. Could we please have a roll call?
Mayor Stolzmann?
Here.
Mayor Portman Maloney? Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Here.
Councilmember Fahey?
Here.
Councilmember Lay?
Here.
Councilmember Lipton?
Yeah.
Thank you, everyone. Could I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second? There's a motion in a second. I'll just say that Congressman Nagus may not be exactly on time at the top of the hour. So we'll take him when he appears in the meeting for his presentation and then go back to whatever meeting agenda item we are on, just so that we don't sit waiting until he's able to join. So with that, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, everyone. That takes us to our public comment period for items that are not on our agenda this evening and for items that are on our consent agenda. If any members of the public would care to comment on either of those topics, please raise your hand at this time. And just again, you can raise your hand by clicking the Raise Hand feature at the bottom of your screen. Or if you've dialed in by phone, you can dial *9. All right, seeing no one, that takes us to our consent agenda. Could I please get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion of the consent agenda from councilmembers? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, everyone. The motion carries. That takes us to our council informational comments on pertinent items that are not on our agenda this evening. Are there any council comments? Seeing none, that takes us to our city manager's report. And our city manager is Deputy City Manager Davis this evening. Any city managers report?
Good evening, City Council. This is Megan Davis, Deputy City Manager. I have no report.
Thank you. That takes us to our regular business. And I'll just look through, and I don't see the congressman yet. So we will just temporarily pause item A and go on to our second agenda item, which is ordinance number 1808, series 2021, and emergency ordinance repealing ordinance 1805, series 2021, concerning local face covering requirements. This is our first and final reading as an emergency ordinance, and this is our public hearing. I'll open it now. Ask if there are any disclosures. We did have the presentation entered into the record, which is posted online as supplemental material. And so seeing nothing else, we'll turn it over to Megan Davis for her presentation.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Let me just get the presentation going here. Okay. Everybody can see that?
Yes.
Great. Okay. Good evening. Thank you, Mayor, for mentioning. Just for those in attendance, there were some supplemental documents added to this. They include an update of the draft ordinance, emergency ordinance repealing ordinance number 1805, series 2021, concerning local face covering requirements, as well as the PowerPoint that we're about to go through, which has newly updated information since the packet was posted on Friday. So I'm just going to take a few minutes to go through the PowerPoint with this background information. And then I'm going to turn it over to City Attorney Kathleen Kelly, who's going to provide some details about the emergency ordinance that you have in front of you. So I just want to give you an overview of what has happened over the past couple of days. I think everyone has been paying attention to the news. But over the past few months, we've seen the COVID regulatory structures begin to sort of wind down as vaccines have begun to become more available and more individuals have become vaccinated. So beginning on Friday, we saw CDC revised guidance around masking for vaccinated and unvaccinated individuals. I've provided some links here that you can look at if you haven't had the chance. There's CDC guidance there. That's specifically for fully vaccinated folks. And you will also see on the CDC website that there's ongoing guidance for places like traveling, workspaces, schools, many other situations. So the majority of the changes were really made as it pertains to people who are vaccinated. And as you know, that number is growing in Boulder County. We have now over 70% of eligible folks in Boulder County vaccinated, at least having received one of their vaccinations. The state of Colorado also issued two new orders late Friday afternoon. They issued a new face covering order, and that covers obviously masking requirements across the state and also a public health order. And as you might recall, the public health orders are typically those orders that provide information about and requirements previously about things like social distancing, capacity restrictions, events, other types of kind of regulations around COVID public health and safety, other than just masks. And then, late Friday, on the heels of the state's new orders, Boulder County Public Health issued a statement that they plan to modify their mask order, which was previously set to expire or be modified on June 4th, to reflect the state's face covering order. So we understand that that is going to happen very quickly, but we have not received that updated public health order at this time. So I have a link there to the press release that was shared. Okay, so just want to give you an overview of what's in the state face covering over. And the reason this is important is just so that you can understand if the county plans to align closely with the state and if the city were to repeal our existing local ordinance, then we would essentially fall back onto Boulder County Public Health or the state's order. And so I just want you to understand kind of what's in those so that you know exactly what we can expect. So the state's order has affected May 14 that any individual age 11 and older who's not fully vaccinated is encouraged to wear a facial covering when entering or within an indoor space.
And Megan?
Yeah.
I apologize for interrupting. If we can just pause for a moment. It looks like Congressman Nagus has joined us.
You bet.
We'll just put a pin in there.
Yep.
And Congressman, welcome, if that is indeed you.
I, and Mayor Stolzmann, I'm so sorry. It's just me. The congressman will be on, but it's going to be a few more minutes. I apologize.
No problem at all, Jill. And it's not just you. This is Jill, and she works for Congressman Nagus and does tremendous things for our community. So thank you so much, Jill. And we'll continue with the presentation until we see his name pop up.
Thank you so much, and I'll change mine.
Thank you so much. Sorry about Megan. If you'll take away again.
That's okay. We can be flexible here. Just as this presentation is reminding us, flexibility is kind of the name of the game right now. So we're just going to keep rolling with it. So the state order basically says that any individual who's not fully vaccinated is encouraged to wear a facial covering. And any fully vaccinated individual may go without any type of face covering in any subject that isn't any setting that's not subject to the exemptions. So it's essentially shifting so that the face coverings are really directly tied to vaccine status. And that's kind of now the way it will be per the state order, you know, and if the county follows suit, kind of across the board. So individuals still must wear a face covering mask in the following settings. Preschool through grade school, including extracurricular activities, childcare centers and services. And there are some exceptions. For example, if there's a teacher who's provided proof of vaccination, and they may remove their mask in those settings. And then places like prisons, jails, congregant care facilities, healthcare settings, where anyone who's not vaccinated is required to wear a mask. So it's important to notice or recognize, and you've probably seen this, that businesses and services have discretion regarding their mask policy. So any business or service can continue to require individuals entering or within their locations to wear face masks or show proof of vaccination. And we've seen a lot of that lately with different businesses saying they aren't going to require them and saying they are. And it brings me back to last summer, when it was kind of how we ramped up in the first place, is some people required them before others, and that was sort of the way that it rolled in place. So there are, there's still the exemptions that were outlined in the city council communication. So that's things like individuals 10 years old and younger or who cannot medically tolerate a face covering, hearing impaired, disabled, and have issues with communication. So there are some various other exemptions that still apply to specific individuals and situations. So the public health order, that was kind of the companion piece to the mask order issued by the state, it pretty much has, you know, all kind of regulations rolled back, other regulations other than masks. The only thing that is really left in place is this piece about mass indoor gatherings. So that would be very large indoor events, like a concert venue or that type of place, with over 100 people with unknown vaccine status. And then also, schools and childcares are required to work with their public health agencies, specifically around guidance for outbreaks and cases. So when outbreaks and cases occur. And then there are reporting requirements in place in the state public health order as well. Okay, so Boulder County Public Health Order, the Boulder County Public Health Order that's still in effect is Public Health Order 2021-05. And that's the public health masking order that we talked about last week when we talked about Level Clear. So, and again, Boulder County has indicated they plan to change their mask order so that it largely aligns with the state mask order. Let me just give you, kind of before I jump into this, I'll just give you a quick reminder, but that mask order that's currently in place that we expect to change, change is the one that requires masking in certain locations regardless of vaccination status. And that was things like preschool through 12th grade, indoor children's camps, childcare centers, public areas of municipal government and state government, congregant care facilities, jails, emergency medical services, as well as retail stores and grocery stores. So that's what's currently in the order. And again, we expect that will change. So just to get an idea of what will happen next in Louisville. So if and when the local city of Louisville facial covering ordinance is repealed, individuals, businesses, and any others within the city would be required to follow the Boulder County Public Health Order. And until the Boulder County Public Health Order is updated, the current public health order that's in place would, what is what would be kind of required. If and when Boulder County's updated order is aligned with the state order, the following requirements would be in place in the city of Louisville. Again, if City Council repealed our ordinance. Any individual age 11 and older would be encouraged to wear a facial covering if they are, if they are not fully vaccinated, basically in a public space. And any fully vaccinated individual may go without any type of face covering, any subject, any setting subject to exceptions. So again, we don't know what will be in the Boulder County Public Health Order. So these are all things that are reflected in the states. So we'll be looking closely at some of these specific requirements. Masks must be worn in preschool through grade 12 schools and child centers, childcare centers and services. And then, of course, there is still the piece in the states, at least, where children under 10 are not required to wear a mask. Masks must be worn by unvaccinated, not fully vaccinated staff in various settings like congregant care facilities. So that would apply in our area as well to those types of settings and then in healthcare settings as well.
And it looks like now Congressman Nagus has joined us.
Okay.
We'll just pause right there for a minute and let all of that information that you've told us sink in.
Yeah.
Welcome Congressman Nagus. Thank you so much for taking time out of your schedule for us this evening. And we're going back to agenda item A now to get an update from our congressman regarding the American Recovery Act. And just for a way of introduction to someone who needs no introduction, Congressman Nagus has been tremendous help and support to all of our community members. He's been doing beyond the best job possible. I couldn't say any more positive things about him. We are so lucky to have had you at the helm during COVID-19 and to keep a steady hand. And so we are just very grateful and welcoming you to tell us about the American Recovery Act. Congressman Nagus, take it away when you're ready.
Well, the same goes for you, Madam Mayor. Thank you so much for the very kind words. And of course, we're all very grateful for your leadership. And it certainly has been a privilege and a pleasure to be able to work with you, in particular during the course of the pandemic. Thank you all, of course, for giving me the opportunity to say a few words and to crash your city council meeting, where I know you have a number of very important items on tonight's agenda. I will say, it does feel like I am at home, although I'm here in Washington. I prefer to be back home in our community. As you all know, I live in Lafayette and, you know, have lived in Lafayette for many years and consider Louisville and Boulder County my home. And there are many folks on today's call, city councilors, who I happen to have worked with in my prior life as an attorney, in the case of Councilman Lay, and of course, in my prior life as a student leader at the University of Colorado, however many years ago now, almost 20 years ago, with Councilman Lipton and Councilman Mahoney. And so, in any event, it's a long-winded way of saying that I'm very appreciative of all the work that each of you have done over the course of the last year and a half during the pandemic. I think that we have been so well-served by our local leadership in Boulder County. And I think that that certainly extends to the city of Louisville. And it's why so many families are seeking to move into our community, because we have a quality of life that I think very few communities in the country can rival. And that is in no small part due to the leadership at the local level, the decisions that you all make each and every day. I thought I would just give a very brief overview as to some of the developments here in Washington DC, because as I am sure you all are aware, it has been a busy few months. And suffice to say, a lot of developments here in our nation's capital, a lot of programs that we've passed and enacted into law that I believe will nerd to the benefit of the people of Louisville and of Lafayette and of Boulder County. Of course, top of that list, which you all are intimately familiar with, is the American Rescue Plan. And we're very excited about the ways in which the ARP will impact our shared constituency for the better. The plan includes historic investments in state stabilization funds, as well as local stabilization funds. I believe the city of Louisville received around $4.5 million, give or take. And we know the Treasury Department finally released the guidance regarding how cities can expend those funds last week. We certainly stand ready to assist you all in that process. And we're very excited and have no doubt that you'll make very thoughtful decisions about how best to appropriate those funds. But we believe that it was important to ensure that local governments ultimately played the key, if not primary, role. Because you all know your community the best. You know the needs, you know the challenges, and you're going to be best positioned to make those choices. So we look forward to hearing more about the projects that you intend to fund. The American Rescue Plan included a number of other important programs that are certainly critical, in my view, and top priorities of mine. Food security happens to be an issue that I've worked on passionately for many years. And this bill arguably makes the largest investment in addressing food security in a generation. Increased SNAP benefits, funding the incredible food banks, Community Food Share, other programs in Boulder County that do meaningful work, substantive, significant work every day, serving those who are struggling, families that are unable to put food on their plate. And the bill also included significant investments on the economic side of the ledger in terms of helping our small businesses, which of course, had a real rough go of it during the course of this pandemic. And I know many of you, I can't believe I didn't, I'm looking at the grid now and I realize that the one, every Louisville City Council person I've interacted with in some form or another, worked with some form or other, in almost different chapters of my life. And so Kyle Brown, of course, I worked with for many years when I was in the state cabinet. And I know Councilman Dickinson well and his work with respect to trying to address relief for our small businesses in Louisville, and I'm grateful for that. So in any event, a lot to be proud of in that bill. We're excited as it continues to, the funds continue to make their way into our communities. And we are certainly not resting on our laurels and are working very hard now on the second set of legislative priorities that the president announced during his joint session of Congress a few weeks ago, namely, the American Infrastructure Plan, the American Jobs Plan, as it's been characterized and are described, and the American Families Plan. So essentially muscular Herculean investments in roads, bridges, highways, traditional infrastructure, green infrastructure, right, in terms of pushing us towards a renewable energy future, incredible investments in our federal labs, which of course, will have a collateral economic impact in our community, in Boulder County, and our human capital, right? Making sure that we invest in early childhood education and paid family leave and trying to help working families as, you know, pursue their dreams. And that's really what those plans are all about. Our hope is that both of those plans will make their way through the Congress sometime this summer. We're working through the details of that now. Within the infrastructure plan, we do have a series of, we'll call them member-designated projects, essentially projects that we have identified that, you know, we believe should be fully funded under the transportation plan. You can go onto our website at nagus.house.gov and see the full list. And Jill, our Director of Community Affairs, who happens to be a former Boulder City Councilwoman, so knows the issues that our cities face well. She can send you the list as well. But it includes a number of transportation priorities that I know are important to the folks in Boulder County, including, for example, Highway 119, which regionally is certainly important. So we look forward to partnering with you all in the weeks, months, and years ahead, to the extent I can answer any questions about some of the other work we're doing in Washington. Of course, I'm happy to do that. Most of all, we hope that you'll continue to reach out to us if you have questions, concerns, comments, suggestions, whatever the case may be. As I said, you all, you know, know your community best. You know, when I, when we talk about the House of Representatives, the Speaker often reminds us that unlike the United States Senate and unlike the President, we are up for election, members of the House, every two years, the most frequent of any federal elected officials. And the reason for that is because James Madison, of course, and, you know, the framers, designed a system in which they wanted the House to be the entity that was the closest to the people, right? And I strive to achieve that objective every day that I have the privilege of serving our community. But of course, when we think about chambers or units of government that are the closest to the people, there is no unit of government that's closer to the people than local government. So given that, you all have a better sense of the pulse of the folks in Louisville than anyone else. And we count on you to keep us surprised about their needs and what they'd like us to be working on. So with that, I will turn it back to you, Mayor Stolzmann. But again, I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, Congressman, for that fantastic update. And we really cannot thank you enough for your tireless efforts. And we continue to get to read about you in the paper and all of the things you're doing to make the entire country proud. But just know that we're all proud of you back home as well. Thank you so much. All right, and with that, we'll go back. That was a fantastic presentation. And we'll go back to Deputy Manager Davis to continue where she left off in her presentation. And just recall all the great information she told us about where we were heading on the mask ordinance.
Hey. Back with the sharing. Okay, well, you'll be happy to know I'm just about done here. Let's see. Okay. So just a little bit more about what will, what would happen next here in the city of Louisville. So local business owners can make their own policy decisions about public health requirements for patrons and staff. And the Boulder County Public Health Order may include additional recommendations regarding public health practices. They have included some of that in the past. So again, we'll be watching to see what happens there. And then the city, in terms of our facilities and programs, can make decisions about public health requirements related to city services, programs, and facilities. And, you know, wanted to talk just a little about that because we haven't seen the public health order yet. And so as we move forward, if council does repeal the order tonight, you know, we will take some time to, we'll have a little bit of a transition period regarding the implementation of new orders within our facilities. We'll review the policy and get a better understanding of the interplay with the wide range of programs and facilities that we provide. You know, as you know, we have a lot of public-facing programs. We have a lot of programs for children and adults alike. And so we'll be really looking at what the order says and how that would, you know, interplay with our programs. And we would be looking at, you know, implementing the changes across all of our facilities and programs and impacts to staff as well in moving forward with that. And so we will be talking with our neighboring jurisdictions also to kind of learn what they will do in similar settings. And we'll expect that probably, you know, in one to two weeks, we'll have our, all of our public health policies internally and for the organization itself, as well as our Level Clear Plan, updated and be able to communicate out to the public, you know, what's going to be happening moving forward. So just recognizing that these are, you know, kind of our internal administrative policies, and it will be a gradual transition, we would be interested to hear City Council's feedback around that piece as well in your discussion. And this, you know, I think you have a few options this evening. And City Attorney Kelly will provide an overview of the draft emergency ordinance. And, you know, given that we don't have the public health order, you obviously still could move forward with the emergency ordinance. And it would go into effect with what Boulder County currently has in place and then shift when that shifts. You could wait. We could bring something back if you felt more comfortable waiting and getting more information. Or you could discuss any other action that you might want to take related to the order. So I'll stop there. And Kathleen, if you want to just talk about the order, then we can have some discussion.
Sure, thank you, Megan. Great presentation. I don't have much to add regarding the substance of, you know, what the ordinance will do and what's in place right now, both at the state and the county level. And of course, at the county level, we expect that to change very shortly here. I did want to point out that there is a revised draft ordinance in the addendum that you received this afternoon. And what we did is, you know, after the landscape sort of changed after we put our packet materials together on Friday, I added some recitals to the draft ordinance concerning the state executive order and also some data on the vaccination rates that Boulder County Public Health has provided us. You know, at the time that we originally drafted this ordinance, we didn't realize we were going to, you know, sort of a vaccination-based system possibly, if the ordinance is approved. So we thought that that would be important information to include in your draft ordinance as a basis if you choose to repeal your, your local mask regulations, your requirements. So with that, you know, I'm happy to answer any questions. The ordinance, you know, operates very simply. It just repeals your, your local ordinance. And so we would fall back to the county public health order.
Thank you. It looks like we have a question from Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. City Attorney Kelly, it strikes me a little strange to repeal an ordinance, not knowing for an ordinance that's going to change very quickly. Can you talk about that? I mean, it seems a little bizarre in some ways. Like, I have significant concerns about the operability of the current county order, given the complexity of sort of numbers of people who are vaccinated or not vaccinated in a given space and whether or not masks would be required in contingencies. So I just, I just want to get your take on sort of, you know, you know, the legal. I mean, it certainly seems like something we could do, but it seems a little bit bizarre. I don't know if there's any precedent for that.
Right, so as you said, this is an action that the council could take within its discretion. You know, any municipality within Boulder County that never enacted local face covering requirements have always operated under the Boulder County Public Health Order. And this would simply repeal the city's more stringent restrictions so that the Boulder County Public Health Order would, would govern when and where masks are required within the city of Louisville. Now, whether that's a good idea or a bad idea, that's a policy decision for the city council to make. But from a legal standpoint, yes, this is an action that is within the council's discretion to take.
And City Attorney Kelly, could we, just to follow up, could you, is it possible that we were to pass an ordinance, this particular ordinance, that would go into effect only after the Boulder County order were updated?
Yes, you could, you could change the effective date of this ordinance to have that. Yeah, you could do that.
Okay. The other, and then I have a question for Deputy City Manager Davis. It sounds like, it sounds like you, the staff, don't currently have a plan for how we are going to, to deal with masks in current city buildings, including some of our daycare or... including some of our daycare or other summer camps or things of, things of that nature. So children's programming, is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, we, we have, we obviously have some, some options that I could see good about how we would move forward, but we, we do want to see the county's order to understand, you know, if it includes any recommendations above and beyond what the, what the states does. And then also really to look kind of across, across programs and how we would, if, if there are specific areas that we would implement something differently. So right now, we're operating under our Level Clear Plan, which we presented last week, which includes indoor masking requirements for both, you know, employees as well as the public entering the building. And also no masking requirements outdoors, but a recommendation to the public that they mask if six foot social distancing can't be maintained. So that's kind of currently what we're operating under across the board. You know, we would like to keep it as simple as possible for the organization, but we also understand that there are places where we might want to consider different types of policies than, than other programs and operations. We have a wide range of programs that we offer at the city.
And one final question, Deputy City Manager, are you all planning to come back to council at this point with a revision to that Level Clear Plan at this point, given the changes at the federal, state and county levels?
You know, I, I don't, I don't think we would plan to. Honestly, the, the only changes or revisions in the plan would be related to the masking piece because, yeah, because the rest reflects kind of that no capacity restrictions and really no other mitigation requirements for other programs and operations.
Thank you. And the next questions we have are from Councilmember Fahey.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of questions also. One, it's my understanding, if we do repeal this, that various organizations, like the grocery stores or B V S D or private schools or preschools, could enforce a strict, a stricter mask requirement than, than is on our books. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. The state executive order expressly provides that businesses have the discretion to requiring, require face coverings in their ordinance. And there was, in their places of business, there was some discussion with the attorney group yesterday that meets, it's the Boulder County Public Health Attorneys and other attorneys in the, you know, representing entities in Boulder County. And Boulder County Public Health was giving the guidance that, you know, once they adopt their new mask order that aligns with the state order, that those businesses who are requiring masks, if they have people who are entering and won't wear a mask and refuse to leave, that they're to call law enforcement for trespass is how the county is viewing enforcement of that by businesses.
Okay, thank you. And then my other question is, what, what communities around us have stricter requirements in place than Boulder County?
Oh, go ahead, Megan.
Yeah, it's a good, it's a good question. Right now, the current city of Louisville mask ordinance is the most protective or strict of any of the ordinances across the county. Many of the county municipalities within the county have either repealed their ordinances and as Kathleen had mentioned, are, you know, aligned with Boulder County.
But for example, Councilmember Fahey Lafayette has one in place that's stricter than the county's, our next order.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Proton Maloney? You're muted. No, we just can't hear you, you're not muted, sorry.
How about now?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Thank you. I thought I hit the right button. So I have a question for City Attorney Kelly. In the last slide before the questions that the Deputy City Manager gave to us, it was the city can make decisions about public health requirements related to city services, programs and facilities. So my question is this, if we repeal the ordinance either tonight or as Counselor Brown suggested, maybe in conjunction with the county doing something, regardless of that timing. So can the city do this, make these kinds of decisions about, for example, programs or facilities and not have an ordinance? Is that just a policy decision or directive that we can give from council?
Yes, absolutely. In that regard, the city is just like any other business that can have a policy regarding mask requirements. The difference is that when the city has an ordinance requiring the mask, masking in certain places, violation of that can be, you know, police officers can issue a ticket under the mask ordinance. It can be brought in the municipal court. Without that, you know, if, if people refuse to wear face coverings in city facilities, when there's a policy in place that they are required, then the city is in the same position as any other business and will be asking the police to trespass the person who won't wear the face covering and won't leave the facility.
Thank you for the clarification, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. That takes us to the public, public comment period on this agenda item. And just for a reminder, what we're talking about is ordinance 1808, series 2021, and emergency ordinance repealing our ordinance 1805, which is our mask, our face covering requirement here at the local level. If any members of the public would care to comment, please go ahead and raise your hand by clicking the raise hand icon at the bottom of your screen. Or if you've dialed in by phone, just dial star nine and we'll see a hand raised on your behalf. The first commenter is Tilt Pinball, which I think may be Mark. Go ahead when you're ready.
It is, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, this is Mark Oberholzer, I live at 224 Hoover Avenue. Here in Louisville, I own Tilt Pinball, the Louisville Underground. I'm also the Vice President of the DBA. The first thing I'd like to do is read a statement that my colleague Jenny Lowich wrote from The Singing Cook, also a DBA Board Member. She said, "As a retail business owner, it will be less confusing to patrons if we adhere to county guidelines, especially when other cities within the county have repealed their mask, their mask policy. Having to explain the difference to customers is tedious and I would rather avoid confrontations, as would my staff. Plus, we are vaccinated. If individual businesses prefer patrons to wear masks in their space, then they may post signage as they see fit." Just to add to that, you know, I would just say that the mask rule had its place. I thought it was good to have in place, especially when the, these state guidelines got so confusing. So I appreciate that it was there, but I think its time is done. We've already seen that it's confusing when the county announced they were changing. Some businesses were having trouble enforcing the ordinance because everybody thought it was already done. And I think just in general, people are sick of masks. And if they have their choice, they're going to go to someplace where they don't need to wear one. So they're going to go to our competitors in Lafayette, Superior, Broomfield, other places. And of course, if businesses and individuals think that masks are still important, those, they are free to make their own choices. Small businesses have had a really hard time through this, as everybody knows. And so I just ask you to please not make it any harder on us. Let's move to the, the county level, that'll relieve a lot of the confusion. Councilman Brown had a suggestion about changing the timing. I certainly see the merit in that, you know, to match the county level. But I think that's just going to add more confusion. It just seems to make sense to me to just say, hey, we're going to do what the county does today and tomorrow and moving forward. And I just think it makes the most sense to keep the city aligned with the county. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Seeing no other public comment, that takes us back over to council questions and comments. Megan, I have a couple of questions for you. So, so I'm a little disappointed that the county hasn't moved faster. We had heard from them, they were going to do something Sunday night. So this does put us in a difficult position. But could you just explain if we, so if we repeal our order tonight, businesses are still required to require masking if less than 80% of the people in their business are vaccinated? Is that the way the counties is worded?
Yes, that's the way the counties is worded. And there are also provisions for numbers of, if, if there's less for non-public facing portions of a business and where you can have groups of less, nine or less, who, without knowing vaccination status, and then larger groups if you know vaccination status.
And so, and, and the current version of the county order is the one that has different requirements for retail and all, all the different settings have different requirements, right? That's the version they're still on?
Yes, correct.
All right, so we're on the questions and comments portion. And so I'll just say, I do, I do think there's a lot of misunderstanding about what the current county order is. And it's, you know, it actually, it seems pretty unenforceable and really difficult for people to be able to implement. And I'm concerned about having to communicate that. What, like if we repeal ours and go to the county's order, the communication for it and the enforcement of it seems next to impossible. So we will have another round of public comment. I'm really interested to hearing what people think, but I don't actually think people understand what the current county order is. So one, I think we need to follow up with the county and continue to put pressure on them to get theirs in line with the state as quickly as possible. And two, I'm intrigued to see if we can get ours, our timing of the repeal to say that ours will go away as soon as the counties aligns with the state so that we don't have to explain and enforce this county order that's in place right now that does actually still require all the retail settings to require masks. Councilmember Lipton?
Thank you. You know, my, the feedback I'm getting from our, from my constituents is that this is all very confusing and there are different messages and nobody really knows what the order is. Everybody's now starting to use common sense and if there's a sign on a door, they obey the sign. And, you know, certainly with the actions of the CDC last week and what the state and the county are doing at different rates of speed and then having this in place creates great confusion. And I'm not sure that's to our advantage right now, nor is it really in the public interest. So I, I think what we should do is trying to, try to find a way, if not to simplify this, but to reduce the number of inputs that people have to consider, analyze and then filter. I'm, I feel, I feel comfortable about unifying behind the county, although certainly the county has some issues right now that they need to figure out. I'm, I, I could, I could see us repealing this effect of the date of the next county order and I, I would be fine with that if that's what we need to do. I don't know and I don't think we can, we can condition repealing this on the specific date that the county and the state get aligned. Because I'm not sure the county and the state will ever be perfectly aligned. But I think we need to simplify this. And I think the sooner the city can get out of the business of trying to develop public health requirements and doing enforcement of those requirements, I think the better we will be. And to also, you know, make the point that we're, we're not an island within the county, not, not an island within the state or the region. And the more consistency we have between the municipalities and, and the counties and the state, I think, you know, really beats everybody's interest. And I would hope that we can go in that direction. Thanks.
Thanks, Councilmember Lipton. City Attorney Kelly, I, I would like to ask you a question that I think I probably know the answer to, but I don't know. Can the city, can the city say that we're going with the state order and bypass the county order? So that we don't have this, I mean, I, I literally don't think anyone understands the current county order. So I'm just wondering if there's another app.
The city could, if the state order were considered to be more restrictive. If the county issues an order that's more restrictive, then the city can't issue an order that's less restrictive.
Okay, thank you.
If I'm explaining that clearly.
That explains it, thank you. Councilmember Dickinson?
Thanks. Yeah, you know, I, I think, you know, my, I'm tending towards the, you know, idea of alignment. I think, you know, it'd be great if there's one federal rule we were all following for the last 15 months or if there were, we probably would have all followed it for two months. And not having that, you know, having a state rule we could all follow would be great. Not having that, a county rule that we could follow. So, you know, I'm, you know, if, if the county rule said, hey, we're going to wear masks during the month, like, okay, well then we'll do masks during the month. And the county rule says, hey, I think we're done needing masks. Like, okay, well then we're done needing masks. I, I don't think they're doing anything irresponsible. And I, I'm more interested in eliminating the confusion we have the ability to eliminate. Mayor, you pointed out very clearly that the county's mask ordinance currently is not clear. Like, so it's not, we can't, we can't fix that. But I've definitely gotten lots of phone calls, Councilmember Lipton, of people just really confused. And again, I think, you know, obviously the seven of us understand what's going on pretty well. But it is very weird to be in Boulder County and not follow the Boulder County mask rule for normal people, right? Said, yeah, 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 but you're in Louisville in Boulder County, so it's different. Like, wait, is it different in Lafayette? Like, yeah, what is it? Like, I don't know. I don't know, I'd have to like go on to their website and look at, I'm like, I don't know the differences in Superior and Broomfield. I don't have the time right now to know what they're all doing differently. So I think whatever we want to do differently from the county is just, it's also hard to enforce or to communicate because it's just confusing, right? So I think they've been pretty well aligned and so it hasn't been a major issue. But, but, yeah, I'm not advocating for the Boulder County ordinance right now or their, their policies right now, but I am advocating that we pair up to it as best we can.
Thank you, Mayor Proton Maloney?
Thank you. I, I thought I understood my colleague Dickinson until the very end, so I'm not sure. You know, I think, and I'd like to have him, you know, clarify, but I think I agree with Counselor Dickinson that I believe aligning with the county order makes sense. I also agree with the mayor that right now it's confusing. But I believe that, you know, they will get there. I mean, today I had constituents call me and I went and looked up what's on the website for the county and it's like, well, that's out of date or it's out of date with what they've stated their intention is. So, you know, I guess we could all express our disappointment and, you know, our, our willingness to move ahead. But I'd like to see the lines, whether we say we repeal it tonight or we repeal it based upon the next iteration that comes out from the county. I'm ready to do that. I did ask a question because, you know, we do as a city and we can say, you know, people coming into City Hall or to the rec center or, you know, the police building that they would have to wear masks without having an ordinance. And I purposely asked that question because that would give us, you know, an additional thing to talk about. I, I still am concerned about the Levitt and unders. You know, I have, you know, the next generation, the grandchildren generation that can't be, you know, vaccinated until the fall. So I'm still concerned, but I think syncing up with the Boulder County Public Health Order, the next iteration is something I strongly support. Thank you.
Councilmember Fahey?
Thank you, yes. I am also kind of in alignment with what's been said about going along with Boulder County requirements. Basically because whether we want to follow, no matter how confusing they are, we are required to follow them. And so dropping any additional requirements isn't going to make it less complicated. And so I, I would agree that we should follow Boulder County's requirements and, and rescind our additional repeal like ordinance.
Thank you, Councilmember Lipton?
It's, uh, it's funny, listening to all this, I really don't want to send the, the feedback. This, I don't want to send negative feedback to the county that, you know, perhaps isn't deserved. I think the county has really done a terrific job with this. It's really been a tough struggle, particularly at the county level. And, you know, I, I hope that the feedback we're giving tonight is constructive for the county. That the message is, you know, we know you can, we know it can get better. We know you're working on it, and we know you're going to do the same great job in the future as you have in the past, you know, year or so. So I I don't want to give them the message that we're that we're really happy unhappy with them because they really have done a nice job and 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 they have supported us in the other cities very well over the last year. So I just wanted to say that.
Thanks, Councilmember Lipton. Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. I think I think what I'm hearing is it's we're pretty, we're pretty well aligned. So I'm going to go ahead and and make a motion. I'm going to move that we approve ordinance number eighteen oh eight, series twenty twenty as amended by the by the the handout that was emailed to us this afternoon by the by the city attorney. And I'm going to also ask that the effective date of this particular ordinance be the date that the updated county public health order go into be made effective. I'm also going to add to my to my motion that we give direction to staff that our childcare and summer camps continue to use masks throughout the throughout August or through the end of August. And so that'll be, that's the motion that I'd like to make at this point.
There's a second?
Complicated motion.
I'll second it for discussion and just clarify with the motioner that the date was twenty twenty one on the motion, not twenty twenty, just.
Did I say twenty twenty? I meant twenty twenty one. Yes, thank you.
Just clarifying, and then we'll have discussion of the motion from council members.
Mayor, if I, oh, sorry. This is Nathan. Can I ask a quick question?
Sure. Nathan Mosley, our director of Parks, Rec and Open Space, has a question.
Councilmember Brown, is your request for them to wear masks indoors?
Yes.
Yes, I'm sorry. Let me make that clear. Yes, the the request is for children to wear masks while indoors. Yes.
For those programs specifically?
Yes.
Yes, yes. So just to just to sort of round out my motion here, I just wanted to say that, you know, since the beginning of the pandemic, you know, Louisville has really followed the science in protecting its citizens against COVID nineteen. And our mask order has always been really focused on implementing the best public health recommendations, even as surrounding communities sometimes went in different directions. You know, I would say that the science is now clear. Vaccines are safe and effective at preventing people from contracting and spreading the disease. But for unvaccinated people, the recommendations are still different. Unvaccinated people are still at significant risk of contracting and spreading COVID nineteen, and the threat of severe disease or even death remains. So based on the evidence, CDC has updated their guidance recommending that unvaccinated people need to continue to wear masks and socially distance. But vaccinated people no longer need masks in indoor settings. But the CDC is a federal entity and public health recommendations are implemented at the state and local levels. Some states like Virginia and New York and Massachusetts appear to be trying to set up some different rules for vaccinated and unvaccinated people. Even the federal government is struggling with this because while they're making these recommendations on one hand, they're also continuing to require masking for everyone on buses, trains, and planes. Operationally, having different rules for vaccinated people and unvaccinated people is very difficult. We can't really ask businesses to check for vaccination status at at the door of their establishments. We can't keep track of the number of vaccinated individuals in a given space. It's just too complicated and unworkable. So this leaves us kind of with a choice. We either require masks for everyone in a given setting or we rely on people to take responsibility for their own health and the health of others. Our state and county appear to have chosen to rely upon people taking responsibility for their own health and the health of others. And everyone hopes, or, yeah, and everyone hopes that people will do the right thing, get vaccinated or wear a mask and keep distance. Many people still can't be vaccinated. People who are severely immunocompromised are among them. Children under twelve, the vaccine isn't isn't approved for them. So people who choose not to be vaccinated put others at risk who cannot be vaccinated. You know, I think it's worth mentioning that after more than a half million COVID deaths nationwide and sixty four hundred deaths in Colorado, COVID nineteen still causes severe disease and death in our community. Just Monday, Boulder County Public Health reported another death from COVID nineteen in our county. And over the last week, thirty people in Colorado have died from COVID nineteen. We'll need to keep up our efforts to vaccinate everyone and protect those who can't be vaccinated if we want to prevent further disease and death. But our our pandemic response has entered a new phase. And it's a phase of personal responsibility. It's a phase of doing the right thing even when it's no longer required. So I'll vote to repeal this mask ordinance tonight with under this amount of this motion that I just made because I'm hopeful that the people of Louisville will continue to rise to this challenge and do the right thing. In our rush to return to normal, I hope we will not be complacent or fail to continue to take the risk of COVID nineteen seriously. I hope we can continue to support each other in this in these times. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Councilmember Brown. I'll just speak in favor of the motion. I think, you know, I was really hoping we'd be able to come in and cleanly repeal it, and we are, I think there's unanimous consensus that we need to repeal our ordinance. And it's really just about the effective date, but I think we'll still be having some debate. I think the county in short order is planning to repeal theirs. So within, you know, they told us it would be Sunday, so now it's Tuesday, so it should be any any moment now to be able to have them aligned. But I think if we have this period where we have to try to explain the county ordinance, I I just disagree with Councilmember Fahey because I think there are very few people who understand it, and we would have to implement that county order. So we would have to communicate to the retailers that actually you still do have to require face masks in your store under the county order. And actually, you do have to require face masks if you're in an office setting unless you have proof that eighty percent of your employees have been vaccinated. But oh, by the way, under the county order, they're not allowed to ask for vaccination status at offices. So it's just there's quite a lot to explain, and I don't want to have to write the mayor's message to explain it tonight and into tomorrow morning because it's impossible to explain. So if we can repeal it and make it what everyone actually thinks is happening in the county order, which is that you don't have to wear a mask if you've been vaccinated, that will be so easy to communicate. It will be so easy to enforce. Like, that's where I think we're heading. That's what I look forward to. And so I think in short order, as soon as the county gets aligned with the state, we'll be able to clear the deck and go that way. But right now, I think our order is actually much more clear than the county's because it just says you have to wear a mask when you're inside a place of public accommodation. And so that's just simple to explain, which is actually required in most cases under the county ordinance right now as well. So thank you all. And I I actually have agreed with everything everyone said. It's why I feel like Caleb right now where I agree with everyone, which has some disagreements at times, but I I agree with everything everyone's said and really appreciate the debate tonight. I do have one question that's lingering, and it was something that came up around the Level Clear Plan not coming back to council. And that makes sense to me that it doesn't need to come back. But as things change, I just wanted to confirm with the deputy city manager that staff feels like they'll be able to make administrative decisions and modify the Level Clear Plan going forward. Like, for example, we've gotten sent emails about food trucks at the concerts in the park, which was part of the Level Clear Plan. And so just as things like that arise, does staff have the ability to reevaluate those? Or do we need to put those types of things on the agenda to have further debate on?
Yeah, we I think we have the ability to reevaluate those. You know, we will be, again, looking at the order when it comes out and kind of the specific nexus with with programming and then looking at, you know, our programs, facilities, and and our needs and staffing and all of those pieces. So I think we'll be fine. Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying that. And so you'll just send a memo to update council as those things come forward?
Yeah, we'll we'll continue to do updated communication both to council and the community at large so they're aware as those changes happen.
Thank you so much. So in the queue, I have Councilmember Lipton and then Councilmember Dickinson. Councilmember Lipton?
Yes, thank you. So Councilmember Brown, those are points well taken that you mentioned. I I do have a couple of questions. My first is to Director Mosley. I'm I'm curious if you could briefly tell us what your practice has been in your programs for children under twelve and whether or not by requiring addition, requiring masking through the summer, is that going to have any impact based on what you're planning?
Thank you for that question, Councilmember. You know, as part of the turn to Level Clear, staff had put a tremendous amount of time into kind of coming up with a matrix based on the current regulations within the city as to when masking was required and when it was recommended. And I would say, you know, the biggest challenge I think that we would face by requiring it or setting some sort of specific regulations around day camp or our childcare facility as opposed to other youth programming, it's just really hard to implement these types of policies at a programmatic level. It really needs to be kind of across the board. And then if we have specific instances where we need to be more stringent, we can look at that from a policy standpoint. But we have been requiring masks for any children inside the facilities two and older, and and staff gets hit pretty hard with it sometimes. I mean, I agree with the one gentleman that spoke is that a lot of people are kind of over the masks at this point, and it does create conflict in situations for our staff to 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 deal with customer service issues at this point, and those have increased over the past couple of weeks. So, you know, I think we were looking to see alignment with the county rather than having different rules for different groups of people. And we were saying that based on the fact that the the county is likely to you know, make their regulations more straightforward and and not allow for so many restrictions.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, Kathy's on the call, too, if if, you know, if somebody could promote her to panelist. I mean, she would be able to kind of talk more to the day in, day out issues that they're dealing with at the recreation center. But I can say I do have concerns about calling out, you know, our daycare facility and the the summer camp specifically for masks when the city provides tons of other youth programming. And and the regulations don't require people at the county level ten and under to wear a mask at any time.
Okay, I I would I would like to hear from Kathy if that's okay. And then I have one, I have one other question.
Great. It looks like Kathy's been promoted to panelist. Kathy, tell us who you are and tell us what you'd like to tell us.
Hi, yeah, I'm Kathy Martin. I'm the superintendent of Recreation and Senior Services. And, yeah, like Nathan mentioned, we have been working really hard putting together plans for our summer programs, specifically summer day camp, and putting together different layers of protection for that program. We have sixty kids on site each day, and we have been working with the American Campus Association, Boulder County Public Health and state licensing to put together those requirements. And we also have a tremendous amount of other programs going on this summer within our facility. And then also just the general facility usage by those youth eleven and under. And so it would be really difficult to enforce masking for program specifics only. So I would just request also that it not be program specific. And currently, yeah, we have been, anybody two and up has been masked since we reopened last July. And it has been every day becoming more and more difficult from adults, seniors, and youth to keep people in masks. So aligning with the county is what my recommendation would be also.
Kathy, what are some of the protocols you use to protect kids?
To do to, you cut out on the last part.
Right. What what protocols would you be using to help protect the children during the summer?
For the summer day camp program, we will be doing a number of things. There'll still be a daily health check for staff, daily health check for the camp participants. There will be contactless check in and check out. We will have two cohorts, groups, so we won't have we won't have all sixty kids together at one point at any time. Both the American Campus Association, Boulder County Public Health, and state licensing have provided us with guidelines. And we will be matching those and also having some more restrictive or protective guidelines in in place. So right now, outdoors, kids would not be masked while in summer day camp. When they're riding buses for field trips, they would be masked. And then obviously, staff would fall under city policy for masking requirements.
Okay, so could I get clarification of what the what the motion is at this point?
Councilmember Brown, are you okay if I reiterate it or would you like to reiterate?
Yeah, I I had moved that the repeal with the city attorney's changes that she sent today, I had moved that the effective date be the effective date of the next Boulder County Public Health Order. And then I had moved that masking be required for people two and over, children two and over in our childcare and summer camp programs. Because that that particular point is is consistent with what's going on in the schools. It's worked very well in terms of preventing outbreaks and spread in the schools. And it it seems consistent with the intent of the Boulder County Order. It's strange that they want masking in preschools and 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 schools, and then they say no one under ten should have to wear them. It is also consistent with some of the, you know, the guidance about this sort of under ten thing that the county has settled on has been strange because that's never really been the the recommendation of the CDC. It's always been two and up, right? So given that children are not vaccinated, can't be vaccinated, the schools are doing it, it's working, that we've always had two and up in Louisville and that that is consistent with the CDC recommendations. That is why I'm asking for that to be our city policy.
So my question procedurally is, will this eventually then come back to city council for another consideration of fully fully repealing that requirement? Say, after all the summer programming is over?
So I what the motion was, Councilmember Lipton, was through August. So it wouldn't be included in the ordinance. It was just to give staff direction to include indoor mask wearing at our summer camps and in our daycare through August. That was what Councilmember Brown had originally said.
That's correct. Yep.
Okay, and then this would never come back to us again unless some urgent, you know, public health matter required.
That's right.
The next in the queue, we have Councilmember Dickinson.
So yeah, I think a lot of things have come up since I last spoke, but, you know, I think that first of all, I want to clarify, we, I think we'll get it right in the end, no matter what we do, but we say two and up a lot. And it's actually three and up, right? It's kids older than two, so we have to make sure that, you know, two and younger are actually told, do not wear a mask. It's a suffocation hazard. So kids older than two, so we can just start saying three and up. I don't think anyone, Kyle, I don't think you're trying to say.
That's that's right.
Two-year-olds. So again, we'll get the verbiage right if we do things like that. But I'm also, I guess I'm a little confused and need clarification. Are we able, like, is Councilmember Brown's suggestion around the direction to give staff about specific programs? to give staff about specific programs isn't part of the ordinance, right? That, that is a separate topic entirely, right? So we have the ordinance and then a separate topic. And I think that's, it's important for me to separate it because I 100% agree with, with the ordinance. But I don't 100% agree with having um three-year-olds, four-year-olds wear masks at uh day camp. So it's like, I, I, I want to be able to uh support the motion without necessarily supporting that direction. I'd like to have a deeper conversation and um, Councilmember Brown, if, if, you know, four of us want to give staff that direction, I, that's fine. I'm not, I don't feel passionately about it. Um, but I would, I don't, um, I don't think that we need to mandate masks for um young kids based on, again, it's, it's all, uh, everyone here is really um fantastic in, in, in their um intent, so there's no real issue here. But I think, you know, the science that I'm looking at is, yes, the the schools have done a great job without the spread, and I don't know 100% if that's because of the masks. I definitely know that's aided by the masks. Um, but it might be that, um, you know, we've seen in other countries and, and in the US that kids just are not good spreaders of it in general, and then masks make it even harder for them to spread. So for sure, um, I'm not trying to get us to zero risk. Um, and it's obviously, we know that's impossible, but I, I think I'm comfortable with how low the risk is. And I think Councilmember Brown, you gave a, a great speech, and I agree with pretty much everything you said. And, and one of the um pieces that I've really taken from it, and someone said it today, you know, I, you guys know I have an office here in Louisville, so we're always dealing with these things for our own office. And someone said to me today, it kind of feels like we're going from protecting our community and protecting each other to protecting ourselves. Um, and so I have protected myself by getting vaccinated. Um, and so when these rules come into place and I say, hey, you know, you don't have to wear a mask if you're not vaccinated, like, great, I protected myself and I no longer I don't have the moral obligation to protect others as much as I did six months ago. But I think, how to your point, there are still people who can't get vaccinated, including kids, right? And so you still need to protect those people that can't get vaccinated, but we're shifting into this, like, hey, if you're worried about COVID, then get a vaccine, right? Um, and if I, you know, I was never really worried about my kids getting it. I was worried about my kids getting it and giving it to my mom. Right? That was my main fear. I was worried that I would get it and give it to my mom. And so now that the older people, anyone really, 12 and up, that wants a vaccine can have a vaccine. I'm not as uh focused on protecting others as I am in everyone protecting themselves. So if I don't want a vaccine, I need to wear a mask, I need to social distance. If I want to send my kid to that daycare and I'm concerned, they're going to wear a mask. They have a, a right to do that. And they'll be able to wear a mask and protect themselves. Um, but others don't have to if they don't have the same fear. So um, you know, again, we're dealing with this with our own employees, that, hey, you're not vaccinated, we're not going to have masks here soon. Um, and when we don't, you can continue to wear a mask. Um, if that is something that will protect you and you feel good about that, others have gotten the vaccine and that's their way to protect themselves. Um, this is so complicated. It's really tough. I really appreciate all the common uh comments from everybody. And again, Councilmember Brown, I agree with basically 99% of what you said. Um, so my, my, just to finish, my stance would be, I support the ordinance to repeal our ordinance. I don't necessarily support um direction to have uh three to 10-year-olds wear masks at the day camp and summer camp, sorry, childcare center and summer camp.
Councilmember Brown?
Oh, I have, I think that's a residual hand.
Sorry about that. All right. Thanks, everybody. And I have a question for Director Mosley, just for clarification. I just heard some comments from both you and Kathy about the county order. And I just want to clarify your understanding. I mean, if we go to the county order that's in place right now, do you, and are you under the same understanding that I am that masks would be required by everyone at the rec center?
Other than those that are 10 and under?
Right. But like, I heard comments about seniors and adults and things like that, so.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, Kathy was just kind of relaying that on a day-to-day basis, we continue to get, you know, those individuals that have been vaccinated and, and don't feel like that they should have to wear the masks any longer. But you know, it sounds like the plan is to rescind it at the date that the county updates theirs um as opposed to going straight to the county.
Thanks. And then just clarifying with you, just our childcare center, um, our preschool is a licensed preschool at the state. So whatever the state regulations are regarding preschools, our preschool will follow, correct?
Correct.
Great. Councilmember Fahey?
Yes, thank you. Um, considering all the conversation that I've been hearing, I think I would like to propose a substitute motion um that we approve ordinance 1808 series 2021 at the time that the county updates their uh COVID restrictions and that's it.
Um, so Councilmember Fahey, just a friendly question. The city attorney sent us some additional language in the whereas is this afternoon. Did you want to include that?
Yes.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Um, sure, I'd second that.
All right. Any discussion on the motion? Councilmember Brown?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. With all due respect to Councilmember Fahey and her motion, uh, I think it's irresponsible, quite frankly. It uh is a motion that um leaves out kids in particular. I think, as you all know, kids have been a priority of mine in our masking ordinance. Um, and uh, and I don't think I was asking for too much here. I'm not asking for us to continue our, our ordinance. I mean, I'm not asking for kids to be masked in the grocery stores or at the coffee shops. Uh, I'm really just asking us to continue to be consistent with um the um with the school, with what's going on in the schools. Um, and I don't really understand why for a group of people um that absolutely are not eligible for the vaccine, why we would, why we would change our policies at this point. So um, I would, I appreciate that Councilmember Fahey, I think you're trying to make sure that we can all vote to repeal um and feel good about it. Um, but I also think that the direction to staff uh should be clear and that we should be trying to protect our kids.
I think perhaps a path forward, um, we have a new motion on the table, so we'll obviously vote on that motion. But I think it would be um just to make it clear that it would be fine to bring up additional direction after the motion uh so that people don't feel cornered on, on it, if that's acceptable to the group. Councilmember Dickinson?
Yeah, I appreciate it. I think I'm confused. I actually think they're the same motion, right? Because I was trying to clarify that the direction wasn't part of the motion.
It was, uh, so what I said, sorry, to clarify, it was part of the motion. It wasn't part of the ordinance. So
Okay.
And, and so I think now it's clear, we're just going to vote on the ordinance. And then I think Councilmember Brown will make another motion to give staff direction on how to proceed forward with the camps um after we vote on the, on the motion that's now on the table.
Okay, yeah, so I, I'm, I'm, I appreciate it. I think that's, I, I saw them as two separate topics and, and so, okay, thanks.
Um, oh, I was just going to go to public comment, but Councilmember Lay.
Uh, just, I'm just trying to get a point of clarification. So is, is the motion that is current, the, the substitute motion, I guess, just for repeal? And then we're going to be dealing with the, the language that we received this afternoon separately? Or am I misunderstanding it?
You're misunderstanding. Sorry about that. I'll try to be very clear. So the current motion that's on the table is a substitute motion from Councilmember Fahey. And it is a, a motion to approve ordinance 1808 as an emergency ordinance repealing our previous ordinance. It would include the city attorney's language from this afternoon. And it would make a modification to change the effective date to be when the county changes their public health order so that the timing aligns. And so we'll vote on that. And then we'll talk about staff direction for how to run our internal summer camps and things after we vote on that ordinance. That's the plan right now. Is Councilmember Lay?
I'm fine with that.
Councilmember Lipton? You're muted.
It's only the first time tonight. That's pretty good. You know, it strikes me also, there are other programs the city runs for our youth, including uh, programs in the library and, you know, there may be others. So, you know, we can't just combine conversations to uh the rec department and preschool and all that. But you know, I'm I guess, I guess I am a little bit concerned about uh striking all the requirements related to children. But I'm also not sure that the city council has to fully define all this. I think some of this should be done administratively and change over time as, you know, as conditions change. I, I did, and I am confused about one thing with the uh preschool and all that. Is the masking just for indoor or indoor and outdoor?
Councilmember Lipton, can you just clarify, do you mean the ma- in which ordinance are you asking about? The state, the county, the city?
If we go with the uh, the first motion uh prior to the substitute motion with that, include indoor and outdoor uh masking, or are we focused on just indoor?
The proposal was indoor masking.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we will take our final round of public comment on this agenda item. Thanks to councilmembers for the really good discussion so far. Any members of the public care to comment on this agenda item tonight? And again, the raised hand features at the bottom of the panel, or if you've dialed in by phone, you can dial star nine. Give everyone just a couple more seconds. All right, not seeing anyone that takes us back to council discussion. So Councilmember Lipton, I just want to clarify that um I'm encouraging us to vote on this first uh ordinance, and then we'll continue the debate on the internal, like, the level clear questions and any childcare centers for, for childcare activities in the city as soon as we voted on the ordinance. So is everybody clear on the process point? I don't want any confusion there. Is there any other debate on the substitute motion that's on the table? And I just want to check in with our city attorney that we've defined clearly enough what we're trying to approve through this substitute motion. City Attorney Kelly, is it clear enough?
Yes, I do understand. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, seeing no hands or further discussion on the substitute motion that we're voting on, we'll first uh vote on that. And so City Clerk Muth, could we please have a roll call on that motion?
Councilmember Fahey?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Maloney?
Yes.
Councilmember Lipton?
Yes.
Mayor Stolzmann?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Lay?
Yes.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. All right, a bunch of hands shot up there, Proton Maloney. The motion carries, just to be clear for the public, and then we'll continue our discussion about what to do with our indoor childcare facilities that are city operated. Mayor Proton Maloney?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I think we've taken a major step here. The question I have is, um, you know, I agree with Councilor Brown about the concerns uh about children. And what I'm trying to understand is how we, and how we procedurally do this. Um, you know, if we ask uh staff that we need to do things and, and, you know, uh, Councilor Brown mentioned some of the uh settings, Councilor Lipton mentioned others, and there's probably others that we're not aware of. I mean, what about, you know, kids in the golf program or whatever? So there's probably other ones within the city. How do we formulate something that's clear to the city staff? Um, if we're going to ask them in certain situations to have children mask? So maybe that's a question for Director Mosley. Um, I'm just trying to understand this. So before we make a motion, I want to make sure it's not something um that, I want to make sure it's something, I want to put it a positive way, is doable and effective.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think it might be better for staff to bring back a list of all the different programming that it could impact if that's the direction that council wants us to go. Um, y- you know, just as people were talking about businesses being particularly at a disadvantage because rules and regulations in Louisville were a little bit stricter maybe than some areas. I think we, we uh potentially be in a similar situation here. Um, and, and maybe people would cancel and go to other programming, which would be their choice. But I, I think if there's clear direction that council can give us regarding um, you know, what areas you're most concerned about and, and maybe give staff time to come up with some mitigation strategies or in what situations we would implement masks as opposed to trying to call out specifically which programs. Uh, because I do think it's going to be very difficult to implement masking at the programmatic level as opposed to um, y- you know, in the past, it was very easy because it was just two and older. Um, but if it's based on which program people are in, i- it's much more difficult to explain the why behind that.
Well, um, I may be speaking out of turn for my fellow counselors, but I, for me, it's an indoor situation. Um, you know, whether it be on a bus or in the rec center or in the library, um, you know, I believe that's where the greatest potential risk is. Um, so that would be the way I would cast it. I mean, if we did something, if, you know, if we made a procedural motion here about policy, um, asking you to do something along those lines without getting specific about programs, um, is that something that is doable? And do you believe it would be effective? A little bit, little bit unfair on the second part.
Can I chime in? This is Deputy C. Manager at Davidson. Unfortunately, I can't raise my hand because I'm a co-host. But, but I, I, you know, I just want to um just express that, you know, this is more than the rec center, so we do want to look across the programming that impacts this population. And um part of our analysis will be, when we get the public health order, is to first see if there are recommendations because we have been asking, you know, Boulder County Public Health, well, what's, what's happening currently with childcare centers? What's happening currently with summer camps to get a sense of what other organizations, agencies, trends they're seeing. So that'll be an important piece as well. And so, you know, I kind of a part of our decision-making around that policy will be to kind of integrate more of the recommendations that we might get. Um, and more information about how it's being applied in other similar type of areas. Um, and, and, you know, right now, we, we have been asking those kinds of questions. And, and the county's been able to tell us, you know, here's what our, because they have um childcare licensing support at the county, sort of what they're recommending and what their guidance is. So we'll continue to look at that and how it applies to all programs to this age.
Uh, thank you. I don't have any other questions, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Dickinson?
Thanks. Um, so I'm reading, you know, in the council communication, page three of the ordinance we just passed. You know, it says, "If the emergency ordinance, ordinance is adopted, staff will ensure the level-clear plan for city operations and facilities is consistent with the BCPH order. Consistent with many other settings with large numbers of children under age 10, the city will continue its policy of requiring masking of children under the age of 10 during some indoor programs such as summer camp and the childcare center." So I'm, I'm super comfortable with that. That, that seems like staff is saying exactly, well, Councilmember Brown, I don't want to speak for you, so you can, you can respond to this, but it seems like they're saying what you're saying, Councilmember Brown, which is, there will be times where they say in this camp, at this indoor setting, you know, you need to put masks on right now. We're all getting in the bus, put your mask on. We're all hanging out in this small area for the next hour, put your masks on. We're going outside to play, take your mask off. We're going to the pool, take your mask off. We're going to the gym, the big, huge open gym. We're deciding that space mask offer is okay, but we go back to this space and mask on. We're going to start eating, mask off, right? So they have the, the ability to require masks in the most dangerous moments, which is confined spaces for a lo- long period of time. You know, you know, smaller spaces, if you will. Um, and then to allow them to not wear masks when it isn't necessary. And so, and that's for all programs throughout the whole city and all the different things. Um, so I feel comfortable with that in that if I were to take my kid to camp, I have a six-year-old, and if I take her to camp, she'd bring a mask. And I would expect her to have to wear a mask sometimes when it was required of her. I, I, that's what I would expect with this. Um, so if that's, if you need more, Councilmember Brown, I'd like to hear what more you need from that. Um, but I do feel like my daughter would be required to wear a mask at a city camp this summer where we at, where we're at right now.
Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Councilmember Dickinson. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that. So, you know, I'm assuming that the council communication that we got late last week is completely out of date because of, because everything has changed since Thursday, right? Um, the county ordinance has changed. The county ordinance is changing and everything. And what I heard from staff, including Director Mosley and Kathy, is. Oh gee, we don't want to have to require masks for any children in any circumstances in our programs, right? That concerns me, and that's why I want to make sure that staff get clear direction. To Councilmember Maloney's point. I am, I am more than happy to say that indoor children's programming. Should have masks. But I was, I was trying to be. You know, narrower because I thought that the most. Analogous situation to a, a school setting where masks have been used very successfully. Was our summer camps and our, and our daycare. And so if people would like to expand it to indoor children's programming offered by the city, I am more than, more than happy to do that.
Councilmember Brown, just for our discussion sake, you want to make that in form of a motion for us to talk about giving, just say, you know, that you moved to give staff direction to, and then that we can help formulate the discussion around what you mean.
You bet. I think if that would be helpful, I'd be happy to do that. So I'll, I'll go ahead and move that we gives direction to staff that all. Children's programming, indoor children's programming through the end of August. Require masks for. For children three and over.
And just can I clarify? I just, I wasn't actually going to bring this up before because I felt like it was argumentative, but just. To clarify for the record, our ordinance from the go has been two and over. So we can say three and over now, but that is different.
I apologize if I. Got that wrong. I thought.
I just wanted to make sure we want to say three now. I just, that is actually a change to what we've been doing.
Let's go, I should go back and read it. If it said two and over, then let's do two and over.
So, and Councilmember Brown, I apologize, but at least on my end, you cut out for a portion of your motion. And so your motion was to give staff direction that all indoor children's programming at city facilities would require masking through August?
That's correct.
Okay, so discussion of the motion that's on the table from council members? It looks like Director Mosley has a comment for us. Nathan?
I just wanted to clarify, it would just be for programming. When the county updates its. Ordinance. Drop-ins in this age range to the facility would not have to wear masks. Is that correct?
What?
I think the intention of the motion is that, you know, there were, like at the library, for example, there would be a sign at the door that said, you know, children two to 12 need to wear a mask. Is that right, Councilmember? I think the question is, is it only for like a particular program or is it coming in the facility? I think that's, I think that's Director Mosley's question.
Yeah, if it's, if it applies anytime two to 10-year-olds are inside the facility. Or if it's specific to programming where there's larger groups of kids potentially congregating.
It's a good, it's a good point. You know, I think my, my original motion was specific to programming, but. But I'm happy to take. Comments.
We'll leave it at that. So is there a second on the motion?
I'll, I'll second the motion and maybe make a friendly amendment if I could.
Councilmember Lay?
Which would be just, because we're trying to, we're struggling for the right words. But maybe it's. Indoor use of facilities or programming by the, offered by the city.
I'll, I'll accept that. That'd be, that's fine. Thank you, Councilmember Lay.
Sure.
Alright, Councilmember Lipton?
Yeah, I'm not, I think maybe we're getting in the weeds a little bit on this and I. You know, by example, if you're, if, if you have a program at the rec center and the kids are playing indoor soccer or something and there's six feet distancing. Something like that. I mean, some social distancing. That's different than, you know, like a library reading program where kids are, you know, like on top of each other. I, I, I feel very comfortable giving or letting the staff figure this stuff out, understanding what our intent is. And letting them to make adjustments, you know, throughout the summer based on the programs, the situation and. And how things are evolving with the virus. Because I really think we're getting really too specific. And, and one size fits all, and I know one size is not going to fit all. When it comes to this. So I, I, I guess unless this gets. Provides staff a little bit more flexibility, I'm having trouble. Getting on board with it.
Mayor Pretton Maloney?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I'm, I agree with Councilor Lipton and Councilor Dickinson. You know, that, that paragraph of the staff report on page three of the report, or the original staff report for this. You know, I, for me, really gets to the intention. That staff understands the, the concern. And I think that we need to give them the responsibility, and I think that this statement that staff is making is they are taking that responsibility. Where there's settings, you know, indoors and they'll require masks when appropriate. And so I, I agree with the way that Councilor Lipton. Finished that up as we need to, we need to trust staff to implement this in an appropriate way, and I believe this statement is enough for me.
Mayor Pretton Maloney, I just could not find that before. Can you say the name, the page number within the entire council communication?
It's page 125. And it's the first full paragraph at the top of that page.
And so starting with the second sentence, consistent with many other settings with large numbers of children under the age of 10. The city will continue the policy of requiring masking. Under the age of 10 during some indoor programming, such as summer camp and childcare center. So I, my question to you is just. Does that sound consistent with what you heard Director Mosley and? The superintendent talking about this evening? Because I just feel like there is a conflict between those, and I feel like what. Councilmember Brown has moved is exactly this, almost exactly this sentence. So I just feel through a bit more debate, we might be able to come up with something. I, I agree with what Councilmember Lipton said, like, we don't want to be overly. Specific and have not thought of something and, you know, crafted ill policy from the dais, but I don't believe what we heard tonight. Aligns with this sentence that's in the staff report. So if we could make a motion to say this, I would feel a lot better.
Well. I guess I'm not seeing the divergence that you are. The motions and the comments made by Council Brown really talked about programming and summer camps and childcare. And to me, this paragraph specifically says those things. I think they're where the, the director and the manager of the rec center talked about was, we're not going to be checking ages when people come in the front door. It's, if they're involved in some of these programs or camps or childcare, it's a setting where we have more responsibility. But if they're. Coming in the rec center to use the facility or the pool, we're not going to be checking ages and then requiring masking. I mean, that was the way I heard that and Director Mosley, if I have that incorrect, you know, please let me know, but that's the way I'm viewing it. And it seems to be in line with the intention that I'm hearing from Council Brown.
So Director Mosley, can you clarify that? It's your intention to require masking at things like summer camp and. Daycare when it's an indoor facility? If we repeal our order and don't give you further direction?
I think, I mean, things have been evolving so quickly. I mean, I think we were waiting to see what Boulder County Public Health did. You know, our rules in the city have been more restrictive. We were expecting them to provide additional guidance on how they would apply these. To children in that age range because they are the public health experts. So I mean, I think our intent was to follow any guidance that Boulder County Public Health or the state or state licensing agencies provide to us, but if. Their order said they don't have to wear masks in certain instances, then we would not require those. If they weren't required by Boulder County Public Health. I think Kathy had mentioned things like the busing. Those are certainly areas where the recommendations are still there for, for children to wear masks, and we would certainly follow. Any of that public health guidance. We've been doing it from the get-go. I feel like that all of the programming and facilities we've provided up to this time. Have been safe, and we continue to do so going forward. We just felt like. Being in complete alignment with the county and not having additional rules or regulations. Different from them in the city would be helpful for clarification for residents. And Kathy's still on the call. If she's got any other comments. She can, she can.
Director Mosley, you mentioned like, so if it was, if people were required to wear face masks, you would require it. What if the county comes out with an order that says they encourage? Childcare centers to wear face masks? What would we do in that situation?
I think we would have an internal discussion about how we want to implement that, but if, if it's council's direction that if it's a recommendation. Then, and they want us to follow those recommendations, we can certainly do that. It just gets more difficult when it's a recommendation and there's not an ordinance or a rule that follows up. To, to Councilmember Dickinson's point, we're kind of transitioning from this area where people have really been required. And honestly, that makes it a little bit easier to enforce. Once you get to the point where it's just recommended. It gets really difficult for staff to, to enforce that. Because it really is a recommendation and it's up to each individual person to take that step to protect themselves and others around them.
Well, Councilmember Dickinson, I think, was next in the queue, and then Councilmember Lipton, and then Councilmember Lay. Councilmember Dickinson?
I just wanted to apologize for my mistake with the whole three and up thing. You're absolutely right, Mayor. So if I was the person that said one thing, I want to make it really clear, I agree with you. It's always been two and up. I just looked at everything and. And it's under two is a, is a suffocation hazard. So I just got that stuff wrong and I made a clarification that was a. The wrong direction. So.
No problem at all. It happens to all of us. We have tonight 467 pages to read, so no, no trouble. Thank you for that, Councilmember Dickinson. Councilmember Lipton?
So I guess in listening to all this for the last hour and a half, or however long we've been doing this. You know, I, and this may be an unpopular sentiment, but I would like to get the city council out of the public health. Realm and allow the. You know, the public health experts, including the state and the, and the county to, and, and our, and our staff. To make the decisions moving forward unless there are some extraordinary circumstance and. And another large outbreak, I would like to get us out of the business of public health as a city council. I know that may be unpopular to a number of you, but that's how I'm kind of evolving on this. Thanks.
You're muted, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Lipton, for that. Councilmember Lay?
Yeah, I, I'm puzzling through this a little bit because I, there's. There's a lot that I agree with Councilmember Lipton on. I, I think we, where I am personally uncomfortable in establishing standards in this area, especially with. Lack of knowledge at some level and. Not being. Close to the ground and to see all the situations that are being, being dealt with and. Some changes going on around us. I mean, we're, we're partly, we're, we're partly in a victim of timing right now. I think that's one of the things we're struggling with. But I'm also, one of the things that I think we're hearing. Is, is something that is more to do with the nature of rules and whether it's better to have rules or not. I, I'm all for discretion. For people who have better knowledge and better understanding and can go ahead and do that. What, what I, I have heard from. Staff just a, a moment ago was more, or, or from. Director Mosley was, there is something kind of nice to be able to refer to a standard. Because then there's not as much confusion. About it. Now, you know, the standard can be follow the directions of the people that, you know, you're, you're working with in the program or, or. You know, supervising your activity. And maybe that's the standard, but I, I, I do appreciate that, that part of it. And do we, I mean, this is really more rhetorical than anything, but are we giving? One of, one of the reasons to, to go toward Councilmember Brown's solution is at least we're trying to. Establish a bright line so that parents and so forth come in, they know exactly what to expect. There's. You know, i- is there an advantage? Is there an advantage to that? An advantage lost if we, as Councilmember Lipton says, just. Pull back and not. Address, you know, not get any more specific with the, the direction than we've already done.
Thank you, Councilmember Lay. Councilmember Brown, was that his residual hand, or would you like to make additional comments?
Uh, no. Oh, thank you, residual hand.
Thank you. So really great debate from everyone and. Hard, I think we're all in a hard spot, and so the motion on the table. Is to give staff direction that all indoor children's programming at city facilities would require masking for children ages two to 12. Is everybody clear on the motion? Right? Could we please have a roll call though?
Councilmember Lipton?
Yeah.
Mayor Pretton Maloney?
Yes.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Uh, no.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Lay?
Yes.
Council, uh, Mayor Stolzmann?
Yes.
Councilmember Finkie?
No.
Did Councilmember Lipton get to vote yet? Sorry, I wasn't keeping.
He voted first and it passed.
Sorry.
To two.
Thank you very much. So the motion carries, and that takes us through that agenda item this evening. Thank you, everyone. That takes us to our next agenda item, which is ordinance number 1807, series 2021. An ordinance amending chapter 17 of the Louisville Municipal Code Concerning Building Height Calculations. This ordinance is our second reading in public hearing. It was advertised in the Boulder Daily Camera on the 15th of April, 2021. We continued this. Item from our hearing on the 4th of May, 2021, and I'll reopen the public hearing and ask if there are any new disclosures since the last time. Seeing none. We'll turn it over to our planning director, Rob Zuccaro, for a presentation.
Alright, good evening, everyone. Sorry, getting the caught up here on the technology. Can you see my screen with the presentation?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. Thank you. So again, Rob Zuccaro, Planning and Building Safety Director, I'm going to be making a presentation on ordinance. 1807. So this is a proposal to change how we measure building height in the city. I'm just going to briefly go over the current methodology. So we have some really simple diagrams in the staff report. And kind of show you the evolution of our, how we calculate building height over the last few years, and then what we're proposing now and why we're proposing it. So the current methodology typically takes the highest and lowest corner of a structure and averages that. And then your building could be whatever the zoning allows above that baseline average. So here you can see our. Lowest corner is 5371.4. So of course, that's elevation above sea level, 5376 is the highest. You average that, and then let's say you're. Allowed building height is 35 feet. You're allowed 35 feet above that average. So. Here you see your maximum height. We like it when the proposed height is below that. That's always a good thing when we're reviewing building permits. So that's what we're looking for. You can see the two corners. That average grade is always somewhere in the middle. What I think the city has experienced over time is that there are some gaps in that code. Here's kind of an extreme example. Of where you might have a retaining wall on a house, and you can see there's a corner, and this is a, this is just illustrative. This isn't to scale or anything. But let's say this was in Old Town and your allowed height was 27 feet. If you are measuring from that building corner, you might be allowed something taller. So in two, and so we had some examples of this a few years back. And there was some concern. So in 2015, the city updated its ordinance to say that. If you were raising the grade more than 12 inches around the corners of your structure, you're actually going to measure that grade 10 feet out. If you were raising the grade more than twelve inches around the corners of your structure, you're actually going to measure that grade ten feet out from the building. So that's gonna bring down your allowed height um to to more of a natural grade. Uh, that wasn't the term we were using, but that's, so it's trying to bring that building down. So you can't artificially raise that height. So that's where you get something like this, where if you were raising the grade um. More than a foot at those corners, you ta- you go ten feet out and you get a new average. So we're getting a very similar average to. Uh, what you had when you were at the corners. So the issue that we found with the current methodology is if someone does something like this, where you put in some retaining walls. And you artificially raise the grade, um even to the point that when you're ten feet out or. Our ordinance says at the property boundary, if that's where the ten feet takes you to. Um, then you take the average of those two points. So here we've artificially raised the grade and you're getting uh an average grade that's about a foot and a half more than previously. So you get, you get something like this. Um, this is a. A building where they've built a retaining wall out to the property line ten feet away. Um, and you're measuring at that built up height, not the natural grade anymore. So you're you're getting a much taller building than you might if you were measuring. From the original grade on the lot. So really what we're, so there's a whole series of. Proposals in the amendment, but this is what we're primarily trying to address with this amendment. So. In summary, what we've done is we've taken a definition in our code, which was grade ground level. We've changed it to natural grade and. That means the preconstruction grade. So this is before any fill is added to the site. Um, now there is an exception if there is an overlot grading plan that's approved. So if you're reviewing a PUD or a plat and somebody's proposing an overlot grading plan. You can actually review that height calculation, make sure nobody is. Um, you know, artificially raising the grade in some way that may impact a neighbor. So that's primarily going to be on commercial properties for PUDs. But for plats, that could be on residential properties as well, but that'll be publicly vetted. To make sure that that that's creating a base grade that everybody's comfortable with. Um, we've removed the rate. Right now, really, you have to read through the definitions to understand our regulations. So we've put them within a section of the code. Um, so that they're more front and center and easier to find within the code. Um, our proposal continues. So the existing proposal allows up to twelve inches of fill at the cor- I'm sorry, the existing code allows up to twelve inches of fill. At the corners, not to count against your height calculation. So that's something that's in our current code. We are proposing to keep that standard in place. So we've put in some language that says, even though we're measuring from this preconstruction natural grade. Um, we do, we do still allow this twelve inches of fill if somebody's um building up a little bit around the foundation. Um, th- there is a building code requirement for. Some grade to get away from the foundation of a structure. So for residential property, that's. A minimum of six inches of fall within the first ten feet. Um, and so that's the minimum. Most houses that we're seeing, they want to, they want the grade to be above that. Um, to really get good drainage away from the foundation. So we are having, we do have some language proposed in there that would keep that allowance in there. We're removing this ten foot from the building standard and really just relying on the definition of natural grade. So that if somebody comes in and builds up the grade artificially. You know, we will say, no, you, that this ordinance does not allow that anymore. You have to measure from your natural grade. Um, so what you would see here is this is that example where somebody has added retaining walls. Um, this is without the twelve inches of fill that we would allow potentially through the ordinance. Um, so if you didn't ta- if you didn't measure from the ten foot points. Um, and you took it at the corners, you know, you'd have a an average of fifty three seventy three point three. If we allowed the twelve inches of. Fill potentially, it'd be something more like fifty three seventy four. So this is consistent with. Um, what would be allowed now as well without um what would be allowed now under our ordinance if you were just taking it at the building corners and somebody wasn't artificially. Raising the grade. Um, just a couple of notes on implementation of this. So. Most new developments, we need to provide a survey with one foot contours that would include existing and proposed grading. We we currently require that for new development. So this wouldn't be new. Um, we did consider whether to require the surveys to be at a specific elevation datum. We decided not to do that to provide some flexibility on implementation. We need to make sure we're reviewing apples to apples, preconstruction, postconstruction. Um, you know, but some some ordinances that we have seen are very specific on elevation datum and so forth, but we wanted to provide some flexibility. Again, when a development comes through and i- if it's a residential development, for example, we do require a series of surveys as the home is being built. Um, at each different stages of the construction to make sure they are within the height allowance that was approved with the building permit. So we would continue to do that. This wouldn't change that. For building additions and other minor permits, um, the the reality of implementation is we wouldn't necessarily require a new. Topo survey for more of those minor permits. We could rely on, here's an example of two foot contours that we have in our GIS system that we could use to do height verification. So. So we feel like this isn't creating um a a large burden in how we implement our building codes, but it's it's kind of fixing a loophole where someone might artificially raise the grade. In order to gain additional elevation on a structure. So the planning commission reviewed this at their March eleventh meeting of this year. They unanimously. Uh, voted to recommend approval, staffs recommending approval um as written, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. That'll take us to our first round of public comment on this agenda item. If any members of the public would care to comment, please raise your hand at this time. You'll find the raise hand button at the bottom of the screen. If you've dialed in by phone, you can dial star nine and erase handle. Right, not seeing any public comment. That takes us over to council questions and comments. I just have a question and comment for Director Zuccaro. Uh, I talked to you a bit about this um before the last hearing, just to understand the one foot. Um, fill addition that's included in the code here. Could you put on the screen again for us the picture of the gray home? So there's this language, it was in section seventeen point one six point oh nine oh that's here now that's being added. If fill is added around the building foundation for the purpose of creating positive drainage. The building height may be measured from the finished grade, not to exceed twelve inches above the natural grade. So. I heard a lot about this house when it was being built from the neighborhood. Um, and so if if I look at the, what you call the natural grade and then the. One from the retaining wall, it really looks like it's a foot different there. Um, is that about what you see there too in this picture? At the maximum peak there, like where you have approximately twenty seven?
Well, so, yes, yeah. So this illustration really was not meant to be anything to scale. I could certainly investigate that more. I think what I'm looking at is the retaining wall down here as an example. So um, that might be a good, you know, this retaining wall is, I I'm guessing well over a foot. Uh, you know, maybe two and a half. Uh, even if if this is a four foot fence, you know, maybe even close to three, but I'm not sure of the height of the fence either.
Um, I guess I I know what the picture was intended to illustrate, but that's not what I'm actually talking about. And I do, I really appreciate working to address this issue with the retaining wall because that is a total issue. It's. It around town in lots of spaces, but I I think that this building is is, you know, less than a foot difference from the twenty seven feet. And so I guess I'd just like to hear other council member comments and questions around if we really do want to let buildings be. An additional foot taller. So if we really are intending for the height limit to be twenty eight feet, which is what seems to be the. What happened. I mean, nothing is keeping anyone from making positive drainage. If we take this section out, you're welcome to make a positive drainage. Away from your home. It's just that the final measurement would still have to be twenty seven feet at the end of the day. So I guess that I'm just um. I'm just not sure about that section entirely about adding that, you know, we're going to let some people do twenty eight feet if they've added an extra filter around the base. I just don't think that's the intention of what we're trying to accomplish. Mayor Proton Maloney?
Um, thank you. Um, Rob, thank you very much for the staff report. I I. I think I understand it as well as I'm going to understand it, and I think you did a really good job with the illustrations. Um, I have a question that is not the same as the mayor's, but it's similar. I mean, one of the things that. Uh, we've heard about these buildings is the impact on the neighbors. Um, and um. This is going to sound like a bit of an awkward question, but so really what we're addressing right now is just the height of the buildings, you know, based upon a na- a natural grade. Uh, which I understand. How much of that does this address the setbacks to neighbors and the impacts to neighbors?
Right. So this, yeah, this wouldn't address that at all. I would say we have our old town overlay um review and ordinance amendment project. In the council work plan this year, we actually, you know, just the these last two weeks, we've conducted interviews with consulting firms that are going to help with that project. Um, so we'll probably be coming with a contract. Um, you know, hopefully in June. To kick that project off with our consultant and that would actually review and provide recommendations for ordinance amendments that would address. The height and bulk of buildings, potentially setbacks, um, all of the, you know, we would look at all types of zoning tools that could address. Massing and character of buildings within Old Town.
Okay, so but but this is one of those building blocks of moving that direction. That'd be a.
Yeah, I think this, a- again, I think like the mayor was saying, I think the mayor's correct. This isn't, it's not necessary for drainage to have this additional foot. That's absolutely true. There are other ways to design around that and get good drainage. This, I think this is going to change. Um, you know, on on projects, it's gonna, it's gonna just have a slight change on the roof peak and it might, you might see. You know, a foot or two on average on different buildings. It's really these projects which. You know, you see a handful of around Old Town that have really. And, you know, improved the grade around or raised the grade around the buildings. You can certainly see a small handful of examples of that, that it would have a more drastic impact. Um, you know, that you might tell a difference, but the 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 roof pitch and all the bulk and setback standards would not change.
Okay, thank you for the clarification and excellent report.
Thank you, Mayor Proton Maloney. Councilmember Lipton?
Thank you. Um, I would also like to say, Rob, it was a good report. I'm I'm particularly um sensitive to this issue in our residential districts and. I think part of it is protecting the uh neighborhood character and and. You know, some of the examples you showed, you know, clearly, you know, the neighborhood character does get a bit, you know, sacrificed when people are putting on these taller buildings and using. You know, various means with grading to do that. My my questions are centered more around commercial buildings and I'm. Um, I'm wondering if, in fact, we're being too limiting. I I don't really understand yet the impact on the commercial buildings. Maybe you can elaborate a little bit. And and, you know, two, two questions in particular. One is our rec center. And if we use this standard when we were developing and designing the rec center, what might have changed? Because that clearly was a pad. That was built up many years ago by taking fill out of those basins and then putting it on top in order to create. A um, a site for the recreation center and then subsequent addition. So I I do have questions whether or not or how we would apply this to that situation. Then my second question has to do with underground parking and and in the future, as we. Perhaps try to integrate more underground parking, underbuilding, so we're not facing um, you know, parking lots. All the time, whether or not this uh, these requirements would have an impact on the encouragement of underground parking. Um, in some of our commercial districts.
Sure. So I, so we put into the ordinance that if there is a grading plan included with the PUD, which. Uh, you know, almost all, if not all, PUDs have grading plans, that you would actually measure the grade from the grading plan. So for the reg- for example, on the rec center. Um, we would be measuring from the overlot grading plan that was approved with the PUD, so it would not impact or require you to go down to that. Natural pre, you know, really preconstruction grade. Um, part, so parking garages. Um, you know, those are typically, I mean, you are going to have, well, for one, those are going to be part of commercial developments with overlot grading plans. So we're going to be picking. High and low corners based on that overlot grading plan. You're going to have ramps, but I don't think we're going to be picking those high and low corners from the ramps of the parking garages necessarily.
Um, so does this prejudice the uh, the grading plans in the future? Or is it a total separate, totally separate issue? So this is more for infill in probably more dense developments. Am I reading that right?
Right, yeah. So this, this does apply to how we would measure height for all buildings in the city, residential and commercial, as does our current ordinance. Um, but it's. Again, I think we've tried to craft it so that it would not impact. Um, you know, really what we see coming out of the ground on commercial properties. I don't think, I'm not aware that we've had an issue on commercial properties where we feel someone's artificially raised grade. Either. Um, but I do feel that with the provisions in the ordinance. That do allow overlot grading. In addition, if we did get a really unusual circumstance where somebody was building, let's say into. Um, you know, like we, let me give an example. We have a couple of lots um abutting up to Davidson Mesa in Centennial Valley that are commercially office zoned. Um, and, you know, if they're building kind of into that slope that goes up to the mesa, we could have some issues, but that's why we, that's also why we have a waiver process through our PUD review. Is if we have a really unusual circumstance like that, I think we can address it through the PUD review as well um through the waiver process.
Okay. Okay, that's all I have for now. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Fahy?
Yes, thank you. I just have one easy question, I think. Um, I'm just wondering. Why, why we measure from the corner, the high and low corner of the structure or the ten feet away rather than the high and low corner of the lot? In that picture, the eleven of the gray house, if that had been measured to that front side block. Where the the fence is.
Yeah.
That would have changed entirely.
Yes, so we, you know, we did a little bit of a study on that because as we were reviewing other cities ordinances, some people do it from the center point of the wall, some from. You know, different average, somebody like you have mentioned do it from the corner of the lots. We actually have some diagrams where we tested. And this is again, this was a very standard lot that we used. It wasn't, didn't have any complex grading, but we did test corners of the lot versus. Corners of the building and everything was substantially the same. Again, if you get a, if you get. You know, there's always going to be exceptions that you're going to find with really unusual topography. And again, we have processes for that. We have board of adjustment. That can make variances and uh approve variances, but. I think on a, on your standard lot, there's very little difference because once you average the corners. Um, it's going to be very similar, I'm sorry, the corners of the building, if it's generally, uh, you know, if it's central, generally centrally located on the lot. That's going to be very, it's going to be very similar to averaging the corners on the lot itself. Assuming the lot has a pretty standard grade from one side to the next. It's going to be very similar with the average. And so, but I, yeah, so we 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 could do, again, we could do that. I don't know that it would create a significant difference. That's definitely a way to address this. Um, that I think would address the same, it would address the same thing that you're trying, that we're trying to address. That could be a solution as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Fahy. Councilmember Lake?
Um, yeah, I want to return to a point that the mayor touched on. It was a question I had too, and it's has to do. With this extra foot. Um, and and I realize there there are a lot of sort of potential compromises built in here and you're trying to. You you're trying to be in some respects, all things to all people. Um, but I. Part of my thinking, just because I've talked to to my, to residents in the world for a long time about this, is that their their general. The the criticism has generally been, people are gaming this. And they'll figure out drainage. And they'll figure out a drainage problem that they can fix to add an extra foot. What, what, what disincentive is there to game it like that? Uh, Director Zakaro?
Sure. Yeah. So I think, so I think if you keep the twelve inch provision in there, um, you're going to see on new builds, you're, you're, everybody's going to be taking advantage of that, I would say, for the most part. I think on building additions, um, you know, that's different. You're working with the existing grade. It's not going to really be an issue. I, I would expect everybody's going to take advantage of that twelve inches on a new, on a new build, a scrape and rebuild in Old Town, for example. Again, I think the reason, so the reason we put it in there is we did, you know, we did, as we do with a lot of these things, we worked with some of our local design professionals for them to give comments on the ordinance. This is something that they asked for, and I think it's, I think it's just because it exists now and it provides some design flexibility, but in effect, it does allow um, you know, an effective twenty eight foot height um, on probably scrapes and rebuilds or new builds on vacant lots.
Councilmember Lee, did that answer your question?
Yeah. I mean, I, I don't know. Either, you know, we're not, I suppose, dealing, you know, we're dealing here with the calculation, right? Not the number, not the final number. It's not like we're, we're, we're saying, well, maybe we ought to go to twenty six and let, on the assumption that everybody's going to do that. Um, but I, that's not really, we're, we're not addressing that. So I, I just, I mean, I don't know what to say about it. I just, I, I wonder whether it's going to, it's not going to solve the, the, the problem that, um, this part is not going to solve the problem that people have raised there. And I, um, I don't know whether there is a good way to do that. I think you're, you're trying, uh, and I think it's been, you know, you guys have done a terrific job on staff to try to uh, compare the different methods and so forth. And I, I commend you for that. Um, I just, there's something nagging at me that makes me think, okay, we'll do this and then people are still going to have a problem and they're still going to be grumpy. Um, especially with scrapes, uh, you know, I mean, that's, it is those, those kinds of projects that are the ones that, that attract the most criticism. Um, I'm just not sure we're going to solve it tonight. But thank you, Director Zakaro.
All right. Thank you. That takes us back to our final round of public comment on this agenda item. If any members would care to comment, please raise your hand at this time. Seeing none, that takes us back to council discussions. Um, Councilmember Lee, thank you for following up on my comment. I, I feel like there is a solution this evening. Um, it's simply to remove from section A of seventeen point one six point oh nine oh, the sentence, starting with if fill is added around a building foundation for the purpose of creating positive drainage, building height may be measured from the finished grade not to exceed an additional twelve inches from the natural grade at the highest and lowest corners of the structure and to take out the next two words, in addition, and then just remove that section. I think doing that addresses all of our issues. I think the staff report was phenomenal. I think the staff work on this is phenomenal. Um, because this has been a persistent issue where people feel like the system doesn't produce um, replicable results, like they can't count on the city to enforce the rule as it is. People feel like it's unpredictable and unknowable. And I think addressing this and removing that sentence uh, would address all our issues. I'm really thankful that Councilmember Lipton brought up the questions about commercial development and that Director Zakaro has included all of the language about overlot grading and how we measure height in general development plans, because I think that does address the drainage issues and the special circumstances that persist with commercial development, especially large commercial developments that might have topography across a large site. Um, and even if you had a larger residential development come in, there would be a general development plan with an overlot grading plan uh, and a GDP, so that would be addressed here. So I really think this is fantastic and I would encourage us to approve it with the removal of that one sentence. So we don't have this persistent one foot uh, problem. And if, if the intention is just to have twenty eight feet building heights, we should just change our building height to twenty eight feet. Um, and then they can still do the twelve inch grade and have a twenty eight foot building, but I think that's a separate conversation. Um, so anyway, that's what I would hope we do this evening. And it looks like Councilmember Lee has a comment. Councilmember Lee?
Um, yes, a couple of things. One, one, I just wanted to clarify which sentences you were referring to because it
Um, so thank you. I was referring, it's on page one hundred fifty six of the packet. And it's in the code, it's section seventeen point one six point oh nine oh, and you can see uh, Director Zakaro has it underlined here because this is all new. So I would leave the first sentence there under A to the period and then just remove starting at if fill. And then all the way through the words in addition. And then just cap, capitalize the if for the next part. So the section to remove would be that if fill is added around the building foundation for the purpose of, you don't need me to read it again.
No, I, I, I've, I'm following. I think, thank you. Um, and then I guess the question I have for Director Zakaro is, and, and the, the mayor makes a good, and I appreciate that, uh, what you just, what you just described, and I'm inclined to support it. I just want to make sure that we're not, when you look at that proposed change, Director Zakaro, do you, do you see any kind of systemic problem as a result of removal of that sentence? That is, maybe that's not the right way to put it, but I mean, um, you know, at some level, I, you know, you want people to be able to, to do uh, within the law, what they can do to their property and they need to be able to, you know, to do, uh, or to uh, to do work on the property with respect to drainage and all that. And the mayor just mentioned that that's taken care of elsewhere. And I just want to, i- if you had a different view of that, I wanted to just, just ask you, whether you think there's any cost um, if we include this? Is there anything that?
Right. Yeah.
Add?
Yeah, I think I, I think I know the question. Let me know if I don't. Um, all the points that you want addressed, but I, so I think that that generally in and of itself, this would not inhibit somebody from adequately addressing drainage on their property. Um, it, it does, what it does do is take away a little bit of, I, I guess what I'd say is design flexibility. If somebody's designing a new house, you know, there are certainly, you know, all new homes that we're, are, we're seeing built are exceeding, let's say, floor to ceiling heights. Nobody's building the building code minimum floor to ceiling height. So what you end up seeing is that, I mean, there are other ways to design a building within twenty seven feet. Um, you know, get two stories of floor area um, and still have code compliant drainage. So I, I don't think this would inhibit, I think what some would say is it's just inhibiting just a little bit, um, you know, design or somebody's ability to design their house in the way that they may want. But any zoning, like whether, whatever zoning you adopt, whether it's a roof pitch requirement or a building height requirement, that all affects um, that same issue. So I, I don't know that this, you know, this isn't inhibiting somebody from building to that manner. I, I, I would say that, I just want to add this also that um, you know, I don't know that this is going to fix the issue that I think we hear about a lot about new homes in Old Town perhaps being, you know, too massive for the character. That's going to need to be addressed through our other project, our Old Town Overlay Review Project. Um, so I don't, I just want to be clear that whether we do, we put the twelve inches in or not put the twelve inches in, I think there's, there's, um, you know, we have to look at the zoning overall to address what issues might be out there.
Thank, thank you, Director Zakaro. I, I guess my, my response to that is, um, that does, I mean, along with the mayor's comment, but uh, does make me feel much more comfortable with making that modification to the, to the ordinance. I, I guess on the, on balance, uh, I, I'm certainly okay with limiting a little bit the design flexibility uh, for this purpose, because I, I think you're, I think you're, otherwise you're just, you're, you're really are providing a little bit of an incentive to, to increase. And I, I just think we, that's the kind of thing that I, I really think the, it, taking that out probably would certainly make people feel a little bit more comfortable with, uh, uh, with this. I, I think it's a good suggestion. So I'll support that. I agree.
Thank you, Mayor Proton Maloney.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I was going to ask a, a very similar line of questions that council related. So the, the question you, Mayor, is did, did someone second your motion?
I didn't actually make a motion. I was just saying what I dreamed of having happen.
You dreamed the motion. Actually, just, just move it. I would second your motion.
I would, I would invite you to make a motion, Mayor.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve ordinance, uh, eighteen oh seven series twenty twenty one, an ordinance amending chapter seventeen of the Louisville Municipal Code concerning building height calculation. Uh, with the change that in section seventeen point one six point oh nine oh, under building height calculations under A, we will strike the sentence that begins, if fill is added around the building foundation for the purpose of creating positive drainage, building height may be measured at finished grade not to exceed an additional twelve inches above the natural grade at the highest and lowest corners of the structure in addition. Period. And then we'll capitalize the word if.
Second.
Thank you.
Wait, I still had the floor.
Mayor President.
Oh, I, I was going to second. That's all I was going to do.
Um, is there any other discussion of the motion? Just, it sounds like everyone's very grateful for a fantastic staff report. So thank you, Rob, and to everyone on your team that worked on this. Um, could we please have a roll call? So I'll close the public hearing and ask that we have a roll call on the motion.
Councilmember Lipton?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Maloney?
Yes.
Councilmember Fahy?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Yes.
Mayor Stolzmann? Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. That takes us to ordinance number eighteen oh nine series twenty twenty one, an ordinance amending title seventeen of the Louisville Municipal Code to add a new chapter seventeen point seventy six regarding inclusionary zoning. This is our first reading and we uh, to set the public hearing for June fifteenth, twenty twenty one. So I'll turn it over to the city attorney or the planning director if they want to give any other introduction than that.
I, uh, I don't, this is Rob Zucaro again. Um, I don't have a presentation for this evening other than asking if there's any questions or additional information that anyone would like us to bring back for second reading. We'd love to have that input for, at first reading.
Any other additional information folks need for the public hearing when we talk in June? Uh, Councilmember Brown?
Uh, one, one question, and this may have been in the packet and I just missed it. We did receive a public comment regarding the twelve percent um, and why we, um, why we chose a twelve percent and why other communities have been at other, other percentages. Um, maybe, maybe some additional, um, a, a survey or additional context of sort of what other communities are doing would be helpful.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. So when we have the public hearing, we'll have that available for you. All right. And just for the folks who attended this evening, we just, uh, on first reading are setting the public hearing so that everyone knows uh, when the public hearing will be and when we'll talk about this item. And so we all, I'll move that we approve ordinance eighteen oh nine series twenty twenty one, an ordinance amending title seventeen of the municipal code to add a new chapter seventeen seventy six regarding inclusionary housing in order to set the public hearing for June fifteenth, twenty twenty one. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion of setting our public hearing? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone. And so that takes us to our city attorney's report.
Thank you, Mayor. I have no report this evening.
Thank you. That takes us to our council comments, committee reports and identification of future agenda items. So if you have a committee report, will you please raise your hand? Councilmember Dickinson?
Um, I just want everyone to know that the Economic Vitality Committee meeting that was scheduled for this Friday has been moved to next Thursday at one thirty PM. So obviously, that's on the, um, city calendar by now, I'm sure.
Thank you very much. Mayor Proton Maloney?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to, uh, talk about the Economic Vitality Committee meeting. I screwed up the quorum because I'm not available. So I'm the excuse that had to get rescheduled. Um, regarding the finance committee meeting that we had yesterday, uh, we got very good news on the sales tax information. Uh, we're a whopping one point seven percent above budget for the first three months of the year. Um, as, uh, Councilor Brown and Councilor Dickinson talked about in the meeting, it's interesting looking. I mean, the first few months of the year are not really indicative of what we expect to happen, but it's interesting information. But we're trying to figure out, do we compare with twenty twenty or do we compare with twenty nineteen? And how do you interpolate what the new normal is and how, uh, purchasing patterns and so forth? Uh, one thing I'll note that the auto use tax went up by seventy three point eight percent in March. So a lot of people in Louisville buy cars. Um, so the, the numbers are almost, you know, crazy at this point. Um, what I will say, looking at the sales tax, it's, it's looking, it's coming in as predicted, which is really good for our budget for the rest of the year. And, uh, with that, I'll pass on to the next person. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lipton?
Yes, thank you. I just do, uh, have a couple of comments about the, uh, DBA street fair. Uh, committee. So we, we've been working, we've been meeting regularly and it's all seems to be coming together. And as I mentioned to you all in the past, I mean, we're planning to do something of a considerably smaller scale. Um, and promote the, um, you know, basically the reactivation downtown as much as the traditional street fair event. And, um, so, you know, it, it is still a moving target, particularly understanding what the, uh, uh, impacts will be to, um, spectators that come and, you know, the spending that will occur. So anyway, uh, we're optimistic, uh, the first one is scheduled for July twenty third. We're pushing back the schedule to buy time and then, uh, to wrap up on, uh, Labor Day weekend. Um, now, uh, they are, the street fair, actually, the DBA has proposed and, and drafted an amendment to our contract with them, uh, which is bound to the city manager and, uh, hopefully will come to us um, on a consent agenda very soon. And basically it's to reprogram the extra money that we gave them to bring in big acts for this year, actually, and for last year, um, and to repurpose that towards the other expenses that they're having to incur because of the pandemic and all the requirements, uh, that they will have to implement, uh, as well as the fact that they plan to sell considerably less beer and wine, uh, this summer because of the reduced attendance. So just because of the economics, it's, uh, you know, it's, it's a matter of shifting the city supports that pay for other types of expenses. And hopefully you'll be seeing that very soon as a, uh, as a, an agreement amendment with the DBA.
Thank you, Councilmember Lipton. I didn't see any other hands popped up. I tried to keep track of whose hands popped up. Other committees, uh, want to make any reports this evening? All right. Seeing none, that, um, and that takes us to the end of our meeting. So we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. See you in a week.
Bye.